Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, October 3rd, 2016. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, September 19th, 2016, be approved as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes while you're thinking about that? I just want to thank Counsel O'Tarant for stepping in, chairing the council meeting. Certainly appreciate that. As I was in Edmonton at legislature and Counsel O'Tarant, I understand, you know, everybody went home safe and sound, so I think that's a win. Are there any amendments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Move on to the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. It's a time where anybody can come and address council on any community-related matter. You don't have to let us know that you're coming ahead of time, but we did have one delegation that did let us know, and so we'll start there. We have our MLA for Grand Prairie Wapiti. Mr. Wayne Drysdale is here to provide us his regular, what's become a regular tradition. MLA Drysdale, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. I always appreciate the yearly visit and get to have some one-on-one. I'm here as much to listen to your concerns as I don't have a lot of news for you this year. I'll highlight a few projects, but I don't think any of them will be surprises to you what's going on, and take some questions after and hear what some of your thoughts are. I think it's, even though I don't have a lot to add, I think it's good to have a yearly communication back and forth and appreciate that opportunity. I guess probably the biggest project this year is the 43X, I'm sure you're well aware of that, and the tender closed, I know, last Wednesday, so I'm sure it's not awarded yet, but could be corrected there, but so that'll have an effect. I think we'll see some bridge work and stuff start this winter. It's a little too late to start road construction, but there'll be some brushing and some there. I think there's a couple of bridges to put in there, so they'll probably get started on that. We all know bridges take a little longer than the rest of it, so it's good to get started. The other one is the Wembley Waterline, with announced Aquaterra has a part in that. I think it's a good thing for the region and the communities out there to step forward, and they got federal funding for that waterline. Another pet one of mine, there's no news there, but the Beaver Lodge Health Facility, whatever, we're still plugging away and had some good meetings last week, and the committee has put in their report, they had to have it in by the end of September, and government wanted to see what services are required there, so I think we're getting closer, but I've thought that quite a few times in the last eight years, and then we start over. So, I mean, it's good to see that they were wanting that report updated and handed in, so I think that's a good sign. Of course, Municipal Government Act was introduced last spring. It's been around, I know there was a session in the city here, and a bunch of you were there, and so I know you've had your input, but we'll be debating it in the House this fall when the legislature sits again, and maybe I'll assume the act will get passed this fall, and I know you'd see me on a letter and some of your concerns, so, you know, I'll make sure they're brought forward in the House, but I know the government's aware of them. Of course, this week is AUMA in Edmonton, and I'm sure I'll see most of you out there, some of you anyway, and it's always another good opportunity to commute and communicate and talk about what the regional concerns are and what the rest of the province is up to as well, so, you know, other than that, I don't know if you can update me on some of the city projects going on. I know there's a little bit of work going on in the city, and, you know, hopefully we get some, like, 68th paid before winter, but I don't know if you can update me on that or not, and with that, I'll take questions, I guess.
Sure. Well, certainly, we'll do a bit of the back and forth, but any questions for MLA Drysdale at this point? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question to Wayne. It goes besides anything you were talking about. I can remember a few years ago when you were Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, there was a rumor that we'll borrow, but no more than Heritage Trust Fund, and it's been in our community, you know, by the time the next election comes around, Alberta could be $60 billion in debt. Does that seem to be the right figures, and is there gonna be, I imagine, some tough questions in the fall in the legislature?
I mean, the government, you know, according to their budget and their five-year plans, and usually gets worse, not better, but, you know, somewhere north of $50 million, between $50 and $60 million before this three-year term's up.
Yeah, billion, yeah. Okay, no, I just wanted to ask that one.
Any other questions for MLA Drysdale? Counselor Rodburn.
Mayor Given, Wayne, thanks for coming this evening. A question is relative to your party's leadership race. Can you tell us a little bit about it, and when it's happening, and how it's happening, and who are, are there any declared candidates yet?
Yeah, thanks, Lauren. I try not to get too political in these meetings, but, you know, you asked, so I can answer. I mean, the leadership race kicked off on Saturday, October the 1st, and there's four, four people in it now, and the nomination closes on November 10th, and the election isn't till March of '18, next spring.
Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just one more question, Wayne. The MGA, it's pretty important to cities and urbans, and I guess they say the devil's in the details, the regulations, so you're gonna be keeping well aware of that, and as we know, there's not linear, and you're looking at that, they're looking at timeframes if there's dispute, that's down from 10 years, or eight to three, but are you gonna be really watching that regulations and asking the city urbanites, you can say, what they're concerned about?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, there's a lot of details in there and a lot of the regulations, and it'll come out, and, you know, everybody has different opinions about it, and it seems the most comments I've heard out of this act is more from the developers than the municipalities. Actually, they're getting hit pretty hard with those, you know, the ability to add on the, you know, the off-site levies and stuff, so they're quite concerned about that, but, I mean, we'll have full discussion in the House, and I'm sure it'll get passed one way or the other, but we'll keep an eye on it and the regulations, and, you know, I would be surprised, the government was out quite a bit this summer, heard lots from people, including this council, and I would be surprised if they don't make some changes to it this fall. I would hope that they heard some of the concerns.
Just with respect to the MGA, in your experience, when the legislation comes in, this is a process question, I guess, really, is there an opportunity for there to be changes made after the act has been introduced for second reading? Because they did first in the spring, and so it'll be coming back for second. There may have been some changes made over the summer, but is there an ongoing ability for changes between second and third readings?
Yeah, I mean, second will probably be what they come out with this fall, but then it goes to committee of the whole, so that's when you usually make all the amendments and the changes, and I'm sure the different opposition parties will have some amendments to it, but whether the government accepts them or not, it's up to them, but that's where most of the debate on the amendments is in the committee of whole, and then once it comes out of committee into third, it usually passes through the third pretty quickly.
So, if there were specific provisions that the city of Grand Prairie had a view on that was different than what the legislation was introduced, there would be an opportunity at least for us to communicate that to government and to the other parties, those views, and they'd at least have a chance of being part of the discussion?
Sure, and I did have a letter from your council this summer with some concerns in it, but if you have any more concerns or changes you'd like, you know, first pass it on to the government, but then, you know, if you don't mind seeing me, I'll make sure they've at least listened to the concerns or heard them.
Absolutely, much appreciated. Two other, well, a couple of other questions, Wayne. One, the other really big thing for municipalities is MSI. The MSI program is set to expire very shortly, and are you aware of whether this has come up in the ledge? Is it a topic that the government is talking about? And is it something that your party is asking the government to ensure that they have in place so that we don't see a gap in terms of approval of the funding, and because it is, all of the construction work, the majority of the construction work actually that I can update you on is actually MSI-funded, so is it a discussion at the Dome?
Yeah, I think it's just starting. I think the funding's good for one more year, if I'm not right, hey, one next year. I think it's done in '18, or '17?
I think '17 is the last year of fundings, yeah.
So, I mean, we've got a year, and I know it's come out, but they haven't specifically discussed it. I mean, you know, I know over the past that people have had concerns about the MSI, but at the same time, it's put a lot of money into municipalities, and it's got a lot of work done around this province, so, you know, may not be the same as MSI or the son of MSI, I've heard, or whatever, but I'm hoping that there's a program out there that fills, you know, that gap, and is maybe a little more stable, but we'll see. I'm sure they won't just drop it completely. I'd be really surprised, and I'm sure in the next year, that'll be a lot of discussion before this one ends.
Well, I guess just on behalf of our council, the program is, you know, highly valued. 68th Avenue, the majority of the funding for the 68th Avenue program is MSI funding. 100% of the funding for our downtown enhancement program is MSI funding, and so these are local priorities that absolutely would be very, very challenging to meet without that funding, so certainly if you can relate that. And then also, I guess, the ability for local priorities, you know, each municipality has the ability to determine the priorities of their community based on the community input and the views of council, and so those would be principles that we'd like to see reflected in the next one. So hopefully, when it comes up in the legislature and debate, if you could take those things forward, we'd certainly appreciate it. The other one that I guess I have a question about, you may have seen, there's starting to be a bit more public conversation about polytechnic university status for GPRC, and I don't know if that's something that you've had a chance to approach the government about, or if it's come up in the legislature.
Yes, and thank you for the city for helping out with that, but, you know, the GPRC approached me a couple of years ago, so probably a year and a half or two years ago, at least, we met with the then Minister of Advanced Ed in the legislature with GPRC, and so it's something I've been pushing and supporting for a long time, and, you know, I think the whole community needs to support that and get behind it, so thanks for the work you're doing.
Absolutely, and be happy if at some point in the future you have any advice for us on how we can best support GPRC. You know, they have a bit of a different role. Their Board of Governors is appointed by the government, and that may make their advocacy role a little bit more challenging, but certainly, we have a different type of voice that we can use, and if you have some advice for us on how best to leverage that in the legislature, I'd be happy to hear it. Those were the only questions that I had. I don't know if anybody else had any other questions. Then, Wayne, thanks so much for providing the update. Certainly appreciate, have appreciated the entire time you've been in office, the fact that you've made time every year, no matter how busy you are, to be here, and certainly I think that that speaks volumes about your commitment to the community and the way that you serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it as well.
So that was the only delegation that had let us know in advance, and so there is an opportunity for anybody else in the community who would like to come forward to present to council to do so now. Just come on up and ask you to introduce yourself for our recording secretary, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given. My name is Kevin Krennic with RBC Dominion Securities. Mayor Given, councilors and administration, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. We're here to speak on Agenda Item 9.3.4, the RFP 20-211-16 Investment Management Services. Before I go too far, I'd like to say that my comments are with respect to city administration and the relationship that we've had with them for a very long time, and for the work that they put into this challenging project. I would also like to thank the councilors that we were able to talk to in the last five or six days. We appreciate their time very much and their input into what we're doing tonight. As one of the bidders on that RFP that I referred to were concerned about how the evaluation of the fee for services was conducted. This component of the RFP contributed 35% to the total score on the proposals. Recommendation in 9.3.4 would remove management of the portfolio from RBC Dominion Securities and Krennic, Dionne and Associates, who have been described by administration as recently as two weeks ago as having provided excellent service. So, we understand the analysis of RFP details are the responsibility of the members of the Corporate Services Committee, but for background, I'm going to describe the basic qualities of two investment account structure types, transaction-based and fee-based. So, investment and transaction-based accounts results in compensation to the investment firm on the amount that's being invested at the time through a retail pricing system. The interest rate quoted on client statements or any other communication is the net rate of return to the investors, since no additional fees are charged to these accounts. Could even be argued that since the fees for services are zero in these accounts, score for a proponent to this RFP should be 35 in this category. Compensation to the investment company is from the issuer chosen for each investment, and it varies according to the amount of funds invested and the term they're invested for. Again, the fee charged is zero. The future revenue to the investment firm is impossible to quote, and it's difficult to even estimate. Previous costs are irrelevant because they're the result of strategic investment decisions in unique situations, based on the advice of the portfolio manager. Second type of investment accounts, which is fee-based, offer guaranteed investments at wholesale prices and charge a percentage management fee on the entire portfolio. Although it's inaccurate, or it's an account structure that can be quoted, because it doesn't vary with the amount of investments purchased in any given year or term of investments, it does result in fees regardless of any actual purchase of investments. We have clients with this account structure, but none of them at this time are municipalities. The transaction-based account structure is what the city of Grand Prairie has utilized since we began managing the portfolio more than 20 years ago. It's the account structure that all of our municipal clients use, the account structure that, over the years, city of Grand Prairie administration has voiced that they prefer to us, and in fact, the account structure that was approved during the city's last RFP for investment management services in 2011. It's also the account structure that we use in our proposal for this RFP. So our understanding that, just in new information now, just before I came up here, that administration has informed councilors that in their view, it has been an apples-and-apples comparison. So, comparing a quote on a fee-based account to an estimate of revenue on a transaction-based account, or even two estimates of transaction-based accounts in terms of cost of the portfolio, is not an apples-and-apples evaluation. Although they both have numbers associated to them, it's a comparison in two different dimensions. We feel strongly that this should be sent back to committee level for reexamination of the process to ensure that fee evaluation, which is exactly what was requested in the RFP, fee, management fee quote, is measured fairly. If the city is going to adopt an account structure that is fundamentally different, they have to address that. We would suggest a shorter term for the contract if that's the case. Regardless, putting 35% of the evaluation based on an ambiguous measurement is a biased approach, a misinformed approach. So, reexamination of the RFP for investment management services should be considered in many areas, but notably specifying the account structure that the city of Grand Prairie requires so that all quotes can be measured on the same scale, and the term of the contract, reevaluated if city administration has decided to adopt a different account structure, that being fee-based if that's the case. We'd be happy to provide more feedback on the design of the RFP from an industry perspective that we feel there are many aspects of it that could be improved, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Krennic. Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming tonight. I just wondered, Kevin, if you could tell me, in the past, when your firm did have this contract, you mentioned that it was basically in the past based on a fee-based process in the past, sorry, transaction-based in the process in the past, and when you compare to what you've been, what you tendered this package at currently, if you were to look at how it was done in the past, would you say it was comparable expenditure that you would have had during the term of the past, or how, like, tell me how you'd make it relevant to what you're talking about today?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Clayton. It is precisely that point that we have issue with the RFP, because what it requested was a management fee, and what we stated was that there was no management fee, because there isn't in our account structure. We also provided a range of revenue that has been received, which is, if you look at our submission, it is at the end of that area in the proposal, almost as, you know, if you're gonna ask for a number, here's the number, and it's actually a range, and it's an estimate, but you can't provide a quote on that, and you can't measure estimates when you're asking for quotes. So, the RFP asks for a quote on a management fee, and if the city is going with a fee-based structure, then state that you're required in the RFP. If you're not going with a fee-based structure, you can't measure the cost on that, because no one who is giving you a straight-up answer is gonna be able to provide an exact number on the cost of the investments for the next five years, because they don't know what their transaction is. If you're asking for a transaction cost percentage, a margin per se, then you gotta ask for that in the RFP. What the evaluation committee did was they took a management fee question and applied transaction cost estimates to it. I've tried to describe or explain this to administration. I've tried to explain it to some people in this room, but it is a fundamental difference in what was requested in the RFP.
And do you have a follow-up, Counsel Clayton? Go ahead. Just turn your microphone on, Counsel Clayton.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Krennic. I wondered if you could also tell me interpretation of the RFP. So, the RFP comes in, looks for a cost estimate on investing the city's investments, or managing the city's investments. There's two ways to do this. There's no indication in the RFP as to which way is the preference. So you, in your opinion, did the RFP based on what the work you'd done in the past, probably assuming, which may or may not be a correct way to do it, that that's what they were looking for, because there was no clear definition as to what type of management the city was looking for?
Would you like confirmation of that?
Sure.
Well, as I stated earlier, the, what we provided in the RFP was an account structure that is what the city of Grand Prairie has utilized since we began managing the portfolio. It's the account structure that all of our municipal clients use. It's the account structure that, over the years, city of Grand Prairie administration has voiced that they prefer to us, and in fact, the account structure that was approved during our last submission for investment management services in 2011, when we were successful. And it's the account structure that we used in this proposal.
See.
I think that's more, I would say that because I think it's more than just an assumption that, based on what we think might, they might like.
Let's see, Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming in today. You suggested in your discussion that you'd like to see a shorter period of contract, and what was the contract that you, your company previously had?
Yeah, so the RFP in 2011 was for five years, and that did not change the account structure. What we were suggesting, if the account structure did change to fee-based, that we go to a shorter contract, just because it is a fundamentally different account structure, and it could be evaluated in three years as opposed to five. Now, if the winning bidder is indeed a transaction-based, again, that measurement, the measurement of their margin, their revenue, is not what was even asked for in Point 4 of the RFP. What was asked for in the RFP was management fee, and that is a fee-based question, which is zero in a transaction-based account. It's zero in their transaction-based account, too, in the winning bidder. And then, what was measured was an estimate or a margin that the winning bidder had, and we never had a chance to submit. We provided an estimate of revenue based on possible transactions in the future, and it just wasn't, I mean, it wasn't even asked for specifically in the RFP, and that's what we're measured on.
Let's see, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for being here today, Kevin. I just had a simple question in regards to the last RFP, the 2011 RFP. I guess I wasn't privy to see that, actually, I don't believe I was privy to see this RFP either, but outside of the scoring in the fee-based system, what did you find that was different? Because you won the last one, and then this one is, obviously, like, on the rankings, you're fourth in that list, so what was different that might have changed that dramatically so?
I don't believe we even put a number in our last one. I don't think there was even a number submitted as an estimate of revenue. The difference is, other than us being the winning bid, almost zero. In fact, this RFP could have been, in its format, right from Points 1 to 4, or 1 to 3, could have been taken from our last proposal. It was in the order that we submitted our last proposal, and that's okay, but where the flaw is in the RFP is in Point 4, the management fee quote. Our submission is very similar to the last one. What we were suggesting, if the account structure did change to fee-based, that we go to a shorter contract just because it is a fundamentally different account structure. And it could be evaluated in three years as opposed to five. Now, if the winning bidder is indeed a transaction-based, again, that measurement, the measurement of their margin, their revenue, is not what was even asked for in point four of the RFP. What was asked for in the RFP was management fee, and that is a fee-based question, which is zero in a transaction-based account. It's zero in their transaction-based account too, in the winning bidder. And then, what was measured was an estimate or a margin that the winning bidder had, and we never had a chance to submit. We provided an estimate of revenue based on possible transactions in the future. And it just wasn't, I mean, it wasn't even asked for specifically in the RFP, and that's what we're measured on.
I see Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for being here today, Kevin. I just had a simple question in regards to the last RFP, the 2011 RFP. I guess I wasn't privy to see that. Actually, I don't believe I was privy to see this RFP either, but outside of the scoring in the fee-based system, what did you find that was different? Because you won the last one, and then this one is obviously, like, on the rankings, you're fourth in that list. So, what was different that might have changed that dramatically so?
I don't believe we even put a number in our last one. I don't think there was even a number submitted as an estimate of revenue. The difference is, other than us being the winning bid, almost zero. In fact, this RFP could have been, in its format, right from points one to four, or one to three, could have been taken from our last proposal. It was in the order that we submitted our last proposal. And that's okay. But where the flaw is in the RFP is in point four, the management fee quote. Our submission is very similar to the last one, other than an estimate of costs, which was then used to evaluate the fee structure.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any other questions, counsel? I don't see anybody else in the queue. One last opportunity. Is there anything further that you'd like to say, Mr. Krennic?
I just wanna say, I have, we have really appreciated the relationship that we have with the City of Grand Prairie, and regardless of the decision of counsel, that will never change. We do thank you for your time. We do feel this is a very important thing to present to us, but also to the city. And it wasn't the easy thing to do. It was what we felt the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Krennic. Obviously, we'll be dealing with this when the item comes up later on in the agenda, and you're more than welcome to stay. As I always tell people, you can watch us live online as well, or administration can follow up with you, but you're more than welcome to stay and watch. With that, I'll ask if there are any other delegations that want to present this evening? I don't see anybody rushing to the stage, and so I'm going to say that it's not likely that we'll have anybody else coming forward. So, I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have some unfinished business. Item seven point one, bylaw thirteen twelve A, the amendment to the fire services bylaw. This is back for third and final reading. Do we need a review of that, counsel, or is somebody ready to make third and final reading? Counsel McLean?
I had a question for administration, Mayor, on this.
Sure. So, maybe if I can get a motion for third reading, and then we can have discussion, debate, questions around third reading. Counsel Clayton?
We have third reading as, as a number, my apologies.
Thirteen twelve A.
Thirteen twelve, the fire, the fire safety's bylaw.
Fire services.
Fire services, rather.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Thanks for stepping in to do that. Thank you very much. We've got a motion for third reading. Counsel McLean, I believe you said you had a question. If you just wanna ring in again, so the camera will swing your way. Automatically, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions to Director Rasheed of Community Safety. What I was reading in this is, has there any change been made to the fireworks? Is it true that we're wanting to have a permit of a hundred dollars? Is that true for the fireworks we're bringing into the bylaw? And the other one is, if you do to go buy six dollars worth of fireworks, we have to pay forty dollars as citizens of the City of Grand Prairie. Is that true as well?
Director Galati.
And show our ID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is absolutely no change compared with the previous regulation. In the past, this consumer firework component was not included on the fire services bylaw. It was an error. It was an omission. So, the only, it's pretty much a housekeeping item. The inclusion of the full regulation with absolutely no change into this bylaw.
And the final one, thank you, Mayor Given. Two questions to the director. If I lived just on the outskirts, and I came into the city where they sold fireworks within the city limits, do I need to show my ID, and do I need to pay a permit of forty dollars to get the fireworks?
Director Galati?
I don't have details about showing ID for this particular permit. We don't have fire department here, but whatever has been requested in the past is exactly the same, so there's no change.
Just to finish off, because I do believe that is the case. They look to see where you live, and if you're from outside the city, you could buy fireworks, not pay a permit, and not pay the forty dollars to buy six dollars fireworks. So, I think that's wrong for the citizens of Grand Prairie.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We have no items under reports, but we move into committee business. And nine point one, the community growth committee meeting from September twentieth, Counsel Clayton, I think that was your set of minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that community growth minutes from September twentieth, 2016, be approved as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Clayton, anything you wanted to highlight? And Counsel Clayton, if you can just point your mic towards your mouth, I think it's...
Thank you, Mayor Given. Not really. It was, as most of the community growth meetings are, it was a very full agenda. We had delegations out regarding a couple of development permits, and we talked a lot about the hillside area redevelopment plan, and what, you know, sort of council's vision is with that area of land. We also talked about getting the community involved, and there will be a lot of opportunity for people of the area and other residents of Grand Prairie to be involved in the hillside neighborhood area redevelopment plan. So, if you live in that area and it's of interest to you, stay tuned. There will be details of how you can get involved. Other than that, we talked about the Northern Gateway and the attention of the federal government, and since then, I understand there's been communication on behalf of the mayor in regards to the Northern Gateway request.
On behalf of counsel.
On behalf of counsel. It wasn't just bills. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. So, nine point two, the community safety committee meeting from September twenty-seventh, Counselor Thiessen, I think that was yours.
Sure was. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel receive the minutes of the community safety committee meeting held Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any errors or omissions that we need to correct in that set of minutes? Seeing nobody rushing to signify that on the panel, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen, anything to highlight?
Yeah, unlike the community growth committee, it was a relatively minor agenda. Director Galati and the community safety committee worked diligently to reduce our outstanding items list, but there were a few things. We had a delegation concerned bicyclist and citizen, Matthew Vavrik, came in and asked this community safety committee what we're doing about community mobilization and how we're making pathway connections to make it a more pedestrian and bike-friendly city. It was a great opportunity for us, and the mayor especially, to tout our community mobility plan and to say that we're well on the way on that. We also upheld a decision from administration on unsightly premises remediation order. And finally, we got a very detailed and thorough report on the intersection at one hundred and fourth Ave and one hundred and tenth street, right by the James Pond Building. And over the summer, administration was tasked to see if there could be any changes to reduce any public safety issues or collision issues. They detailed everything from a three-way stop control to a roundabout. In the end, they had ran a small, little pilot project, adding an extra lane that would be a left-turn lane to reduce the, I guess, the queue of vehicles that are stuck in that intersection. And now, they have requested that the lane markings be extended by another twenty-five meters within the administration, and so, committee just accepted that report for information, and that was that.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. I will move to nine point three, the corporate services committee meeting. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel receive the minutes of the corporate services committee meeting held Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, 2016, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel approve that the municipal census be held biannually beginning in 2018. Background to this motion would be that the next schedule, the census, was to be 2017 for two basic reasons. We're suggesting that we not have it next year, but start, go again into eighteen, and then do biannually after that. Those two reasons are that it's an election year, and that Department of City is busy on election year. And secondly, we did receive a federal census in 2016, and the results will be made available in 2017. So, in some sense, that might be redundant in 2017. So, we're suggesting, we're recommending, committee, that counsel approve the municipal census be held biannually beginning in 2018.
Thanks, Counsel Redburn. Open for discussion or debate, Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, just a question on this one. So, with, as is one of the reasons stated for moving it with that we already have a federal census, I could see that going into the future, there could be times when we have a federal census and municipal census in the same year. Will the, does the plan and the bylaw have flexibility in it so that there could be maybe a delay? I think according to my math, you would have a municipal census and a federal census in 2026. Is the plan to, that would be, you know, you would just have that overlap, or would you maybe delay it a year and start another two-year cycle?
So, Mayor Given, absolutely, we have flexibility in that biannual commitment. And we would look at it, but that would be considered at the time.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C-1277B, being an amendment to the city administration bylaw. And I'll provide a context at second reading, if that's okay.
Sure. Thanks very much, Counsel Redburn. So, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion for first reading carries. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C-1277B. Basically, this, these amendments are twofold. One, it's to correct some wording to be consistent with the MGA. That wording is signing certificates of advertising, so it's a minor, minor change. The major change would be that presently, all agreements now need to be signed by the mayor and the corporate services director. These amendments would change that, that the designation will be to the corporate services director or designing it only. So, we found that other cities in their research have just the one person doing the signatures. Minutes, bylaws, checks, and other instruments, negotiable instruments, will still continue to be signed by two people. It is just that the, these, this particular, the agreements part is what we're changing. We think that it's administrative activity, and there's not a need for the mayor to be signing off on those. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Redburn. I can provide counsel a little bit of additional context as well. For those council members that have sat in as deputy mayor while they've been out of the city, may have experienced this, but regularly, a portion of the task is signing agreements to such a small scale as rink board advertising agreements. So, a thousand dollars that somebody pays to rent the advertising space on the boards at one of the city arenas, all the way down to a hourly rental fee for Teresa Sergeant Hall, or rental of separate rooms, different rooms or facilities at the Grand Prairie Museum. I certainly appreciate getting to know who's getting married when by signing all those contracts, but it seems to be one of those things where we have a chance to improve our process by saying, you know, we don't need to carry these documents up and down the stairs a couple of times through other people's offices to get them signed. So, in terms of the oversight, all of the other documents, in terms of significant contracts, are ones that are either approved through council's budget cycle. So, if there's a contract for work or a tender or an RFP, they're ones that have been approved through council's budget process, or they're within the spending limits that are set by council policy for administration. So, just to clarify what the intent of this is, it's to say, we don't need to have the mayor and the corporate services director signing in quadruplicate, sometimes, documents for somebody's wedding, I think is the easiest way that I would express it. So, I'm happy to take any questions about that, or if there's any other discussion or debate. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. That motion carries. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel have third reading of bylaw C-1277B at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Redburn. So, a motion to have third and final reading here at this meeting must pass unanimously as counsel knows. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel give third reading to bylaw C-1277B, being an amendment to the city administration bylaw. Thanks very much, Counsel Redburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel approve policy 101, 101, being the council remuneration policy as amended. The two changes in this policy are, one, there's a word changing to Canada Revenue Agency. I think it was Revenue Canada or something before, but it's a minor change. The big change is that we would enact the public committee that helps develop and bring a recommendation back to council would happen in the third year of four-year terms. Last, it's changing from the second year of three-year terms. This is in the third year of a four-year term, which is consistent with now our terms being four years instead of three years. So, the procedures will be the same. Committee will be, public members will be advertised for, committee will be selected. Council will have, say, in that selection, they will do their work with Legislative Services Manager Terry, and then ultimately, a report comes to council that we can choose to accept, change, whatever. But this policy change really is through the three to four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Redburn. Open for discussion or debate, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I get the changes from the three-year election to four-year where we're at now today. The question I have is, would it be all character, or would this have to go back to corporate to, it could be multiple? This is just for changing what the elections, how it's changed, is for council to be full-time or be vice versa, half-time then, or full-time depending on wage? Would this be the appropriate time to try amendment or talk to vote in corporate? I guess I could throw it out there, but I don't wanna get a loss. We're talking about remuneration now, and next time we look at it, it could be appointing public members to sit on the committee. So, I'm just throwing it out there, asking the question legislation is, or to whoever may. I'm just wondering, because I know other areas in the province have changed to full-time, or it could be either or, half-time or full-time counselors after you're elected.
So, Counsel McLean, the policy 101 that's in front of us today is specific to how council will review its salaries and determination of full-time, part-time. So, it really speaks to the process about doing that, and not the conditions or sort of the philosophy behind it. That would be something that would come as a result of the terms of reference and the work of the committee that we'd appoint. The committee would do their research, make a recommendation to council, and then this council, that time, would have the discussion, debate, to vote that recommendation and what we foresaw for the council after the election. So, it would be, it would be when that comes forward, would be my advice.
So, we'll have another chance.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Given our delegation this evening, I'm gonna propose a motion for consideration prior to the recommendation. I would move counsel refer RFP 20-1211-16 back to corporate services committee for a further review of the approach to the fees and charges methodology expressed in the RFP document.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Redburn. Motion's in order, open for discussion and debate. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question me to Ken, Director Corporate. In this RFP that was initiated, and there's been quite a few that put in their responses to it, and they all lined up, and they were categorized. Do you find that that was a fair process and met all categories?
Director Anderson?
Yes, four people did evaluate. Three people from finance, one person from purchasing, and they are all very comfortable with the approach taken in the evaluation process.
Thank you.
That's Counsel McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. My direct, my question is also to Director Ken Anderson. In regards to the RFP process, do you feel that there's a chance that in the evaluation of all the RFPs, that the difference between a fee-based structure and transaction-based structure could negatively impact all the other, I guess, proponents or proposals if they were working under the guise of a transaction versus a fee-based system?
Well, everybody's, all proponents proposed the same thing. It was certain number of points per transaction, and they all varied significantly. So what we did is we applied those percentages or points to the portfolio of all, as a whole, assuming it turned over in a year. And that's how we determined costs so that we would have a fair basis for it. So everybody quoted points, and everybody was evaluated in the same methodology.
Okay. Thanks, Director Anderson. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I had a question for administration as well. Director Anderson, can you tell me if it's other municipalities across the province would have 35% of, of the RFP on pricing?
Ms. Pams.
Well, Mayor Given, I can't quote specifically what other municipalities have. It's probably in the 25 to 35. It's usually fairly significant. And council did make an adjustment a few years ago to 35% for a flexibility value that council sees in the cost component.
I don't have a question, but I did have something else to say, if that's all right?
Sure, there's certainly open for discussion and debate. Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to express that I will support the motion on the floor. I think that although administration may feel that the RFP was evaluated fairly, I don't think that the RFP was clear. I think that if administration had a preference, that the RFP could have been written differently. There's obviously two different formats of, of pricing this type of work, and the RFP in my mind didn't indicate a preference. It didn't indicate what they preferred, didn't indicate if they liked the kind, the type of pricing that had been, the model that had been presented in the past. And I think it's a, a good motion in the sense that it go back to corporate services, come back with a clear, more defined RFP, and it would just be better for tho, all those concerned, and, and we may see different submissions back from, from all four candidates. So I will support the motion.
Just to clarify, I don't, that's not the intent that I understood from Counselor Edburn's motion to, to change or reissue the RFP. It was to review it so that council could better understand it. So I, so Counselor Edburn, is that correct? What was, you just have to turn your microphone on there.
That's exactly correct. I thought, I think that a pause and corporate services and administration reviewing the RFP in the manner that I suggested in the motion could be useful. So I'm not suggesting what the results of that might be. Might be the same recommendation come back, might, might be RFP change or re-RFP, but I think, I guess what I'm interested in is the pause and a, and a second look at the RFP.
Thanks, Counselor Edburn. I see others in the queue. For me, I'll just say that I'll also be supporting the motion in that I think, first off, I haven't had the benefit of seeing the way the RFP was structured itself, and so I can't speak to the way that it was or wasn't laid out. And I appreciate that there are, even, you know, the delegation spoke to the challenge of sort of explaining the different approaches. And, you know, maybe there's, there are times where council has to acknowledge that we're not subject matter experts, and we need our subject matter experts to explain these things in a little bit greater detail. And for me, this is one of those ones, particularly given the importance of managing the city's investment portfolio and balancing the, the desire to ensure that we have a attractive fee structure that ensures that we're essentially spending as few taxpayer dollars as possible on, on management and, and all the other considerations about service and support that we would expect for the significant investment. So I'm, I'm like Counselor Edburn, looking for that pause so that I can get more information. And probably in, I would have some expectation, there'd be some matter of that, some portion of that that would be in camera if administration needed to really be able to spell out the differences and the different ways that they were presented. So, so I'm for the pause that we have a chance to really understand the issue better. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would say amen to that, but I, I, I will say amen to that. Actually, I am too going to support the, the emotion. For me, it's, it's largely about, I have faith in our, our administration and that they're doing the best job possible. I think for me, this is just, just a vote to ensure that I have clarity and the opportunity to provide myself clarity to make the best decisions on behalf of the people that we serve and the people who serve us, and to ensure that that is transparent all the way right up here to the council table. So I too will be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. For the reasons that were mentioned just during this last little roundtable, I will also be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting the motion because at the corporate committee, it said about savings and cost savings for the taxpayers. Sometimes against RFPs because the savings that we pick are more and they're very closely aligned to how close they were from 90 to 86%. There's a 27% difference of this, but I know they were asking, but I heard that we were going to have savings on services, and that's why I'm going to not support this motion. I'd rather support the other one. If you want to know about cost savings, change some RFPs where the cost savings are more, but actually the percentages are close. I won't be supporting it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just guess a point of clarification. I can appreciate that some of this discussion at corporate services will be in camera. Based on the discussion at committee level, will this come back to council?
Yeah, ultimately, to award the RFP or to cancel an RFP would take a motion of council.
All right. Thank you.
Certainly, though, all council members, if they're looking to have a better understanding of the process and the evaluation and the, the different fee structures, all members of council are welcome to attend any committee meeting if they wish. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote on Counselor Edburn's motion. Thank you. That motion carries. One opposed. I think that handles all of our committee business. Was there anything else from that committee? That was a pretty busy one with lots of motions. Anything else that you covered, Counselor Edburn?
One other item, Mayor Given, if I can just share with my colleagues. What was it? Terms of reference amendment, report to council, oh, yes. In conjunction with the council remuneration committee, there wasn't really an identified timeframe when we need the report back. And committee felt the report should come back early in 2017 so that potential candidates for the election in 2017 had that information well in advance. So we've added a, a date of no later than March 2017 for council to receive that report.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think that handles all of our committee business. We have no items of correspondence this evening, and I believe our delegation business was addressed with a previous motion. We have no notices of motion tonight, so let it take us to council member reports, and we'll start with the Disabled Transportation Society and Counselor Edburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just reporting on the September 22nd board meeting. Items discussed included timeframe for DTS payment to city for previously purchased buses, timeline for the ordering of new buses, financial challenges, membership and travel fees for 2017, and board membership. So we had actually a, a good meeting with this, as you can tell, more than significant agenda. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Counselor Thiessen, you said that you had an update from the InterCity Forum on Social Policy.
Sure, I did. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Friday, September 23rd, the InterCity Forum on Social Policy met in Le Duc to discuss a variety of, of things. We received updates from, from AUMA, FCM, and I was able to provide an update from the Interagency Council on Housing and Homelessness. Just some highlights from the AUMA updates. They're currently working with the province on the provincial affordable housing strategy, and one of their top priorities currently, right now, is the legalization of marijuana. So they're looking into, with, if they said 2017, it's their number one, that they're looking into enforcement, licensing, and the challenges that municipalities will face due to this legalization in many ways. And they're looking to help municipalities create the power to make their bylaws and licensing through pre-existing businesses around marijuana legislation. There was also, they also gave an update on prolific offenders and how they're looking into that. It's a new topic for them. And federal review of the temporary foreign worker program. And the update coming from theirs that they're trying to streamline the temporary foreign worker application process and clarify the intent of the program to ensure that it's not a means, not a means for, for immigration rather than coming here as a temporary foreign worker. So they're working with the federal government on that. We also had Gisela Kwak, wow, that really popped in the mic, a strategic policy analyst from the province of Alberta, come in and talk about the poverty reduction strategy and how they're going to move it into the poverty reduction action plan here in the next phase. Some of those things that she touched on in and around that is creating a cross-ministry approach for poverty reduction, looking beyond income and, and acknowledging that collective efforts needs to be made on different levels of government to reduce poverty, which may also include a living wage. They're also working on measurements and performance strategies, and she gave an update on the minimum wage that just recently went up to $12.20. Thanks for that. We also had an update on the payday loans legislation as well, which came into force on August 1st. Basically, this is to stop predatory lending. So some of the new rules in legislation is that borrowing fees have gone down from $23 out of 100 to $15 out of 100. And payday loan lenders can't market directly to the individuals or share information with third parties not associated with insurance, administration, or collection. Finally, we had Minister Laurie Segirdson from the Minister of Seniors and Housing come and join us, give a small presentation, and she was tasked with answering questions from everything from affordable housing to rural transportation connections for seniors, transitioning buildings for use of unutilized spaces that are owned by the province to move into affordable housing or other usable buildings, and a one-stop-shop record sharing in health and mental health to better ensure the health of our provincial citizens. She did also say that the province is looking into the two-on-one phone system for services as well.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Clayton, I believe you had Airport Commission?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. Just a few things to report from the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. Both myself, Counselor Tarrant, and Counselor Riceit on this, but I will provide some information. A year-over-year monthly rate, the airport is down at 8.8% in travelers and the year-to-date at 9.6. Unfortunately, it's not a completely fair number as 2014 was a record, record year for passenger movement. So 2015 actually saw a slight reduction at just 434,000, so only about 10,000 down. The estimate for 2016 puts the lowest service since 2011 at 395,000. So demand is definitely down. The airline schedule for the fall, unfortunately, demand to Edmonton is remaining soft, and Air Canada's corporate strategy is focusing more on international demand, which in turn means more, less flights through Edmonton and more through Calgary. WestJet at this point is remaining with no reductions on the horizon. However, they also are favoring Calgary as the hub for their connections. The Airport Commission is working in cooperation with both Air Canada and WestJet in order to try to preserve late-night flights where they arrive late in Grand Prairie and leave early the next day, because at this point, the schedule doesn't have as many options to fly out the next morning that it's had in the past. As well, just a quick thing, the RFP for the design for the east access road closes on the 4th, so in a day or so here. And the, with the planned time filing, timeline for design and cost estimates with early 2017, with tender in construction in 2018. So that's about it for the airport. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Are there any other council members that had roundtable reports? I think I got everybody, but just in case. If not, then we'll start with individual council member reports and Counselor O'Toole, motion that he's ready to go. He's got his info propped up in front of him, and, and thanks very much for that, Counselor O'Toole.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Tuesday, September 27th, I attended the Best Bar None Awards, spoke on behalf of you, sir. And there was nine individual companies or associations or locations where bars are located, and they were up for grabs for awards, which is an increase over last year, which is an increase over the year before. So there's 22 locations in Grand Prairie where we can call it a lounge or bar setting, and we're at about 50% now, close to 50%, having everybody on board. It was very well-attended. The part that really impressed me was Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission brought up members from Calgary and Edmonton and their office here in town. We're all at the event to promote this, and we're the third city in Alberta. Alberta, I mean, Edmonton and Calgary have been one and two. I'm not sure who was first or second, but we're Grand Prairie's third, and Lethbridge come in on fourth. And the comment that I got from AGLC was Grand Prairie's the most supportive of this event, and our team, that's city on 99th is just a wonderful team, outgoing, and, and really wanting to make this a huge success. I also went to Edmonton the day after, on the 28th. Got up at 4:00 in the morning, caught the plane at 6:00, and we went to the geothermal discussion at the U of A. There was 100 geologists, engineers, and they spoke pro and for, or against the geothermal. They discussed different types of geothermal, the opportunity to produce energy, power as, or even just heat. And it's still in the air on where we're going to be at, but the city, the city provided some funding for a research project earlier this year, and Grand Prairie has got a pretty good solid base for temperature, water. At about five kilometers, we're at about 122 degrees Celsius down there. So definitely producing steam. So there's still lots to be, lots of information to be had, and I'd like to see the city can continue investigating and working with the U of A. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Edburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Busy couple weeks, so I'll highlight a couple things, maybe a couple more than normal, given our timeframe for our meeting. Cultural Integration Academy graduation, I brought greetings again from the city. Counselor McLean joined me, and we had another great evening. The good news is that there's going to be another class. So they have, they have enough funding to support another class this year, so that, that'll be welcomed. And then we'll see what they do next in terms of recommendations, so whether to continue and how, what resources do they have or what do they need. But it's good to see another class. We'll be starting in early October. Went to GPRC's 50th Anniversary Kickoff. There'll be a number of things happening through the year. This was their kickoff, and I went there because, wow, tell the truth, 49 years ago, I was at the Grand Prairie Regional College. It was its second year in existence, was a one-year institution, but I remember fondly, and I was able to reminisce with two instructors, Lauren Willie and Paul Lemay. They happened to teach in the day. There obviously wasn't a full load for college professors or instructors. So they taught at the high, Grand Prairie High School that I attended previous year and the college. So by teaching in both learning institutions, they were able to have a full-time job, so to speak. So it was a great, great reminiscing time. Stars, AGM, just to note that it is their, it was their 10th anniversary, and they had an open house. So 10 years, I'd kind of forgotten that it's been around for that length of time, and I think it's been a wealth of addition to the services for our areas. And with Counselor Thiessen, we both attended the GPRC Circle of Aboriginal Students Welcoming Minnie Pow Wow. So it's a different format for the welcoming event, but it was a well-received. And yeah, lots of dancing, lots of cultural, cultural par of the evening. Even had to dance, so that was, that was quite the sight in itself. Well, we were in a line, let's put it that way. We're in a line. And finally, just wanted to thank our staff and our community partners for Orange Day event. Phil Fontaine was an excellent speaker, and Bill did a great job emceeing. And the stories that were told, and the culture that was shared, and the hope, and the kudos given to our community for what we're doing by Mr. Fontaine. We're very welcomed, and I really felt good about our community on that day. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counsel Redburn. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have a couple items to note. I was able to attend the permanent pipeline groundbreaking of their new Grand Prairie office here in town. So great to see a corporation like them, that's a good community partner, that's willing to invest in the city and investing significantly in a new building. And so it was great to welcome them and see the progress that they're making there. This past week, I was able to attend a luncheon with Mayor Nenshi of Calgary. And it was great to talk with him and just hear some of his challenges with the provincial government and, you know, other situations that are happening down in Calgary, and to get that provincial perspective there. And was able to see him again that evening at the Nurse the North, the Community Foundation's fundraiser, and another great event. And I believe lots of money was raised for the foundation. And it was great to hear then she speak about community and the value that community had during the floods that happened in Calgary. And that concludes my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Most of the things I attended have been discussed already. I did want to also mention, though, the Stars AGM and Open House. Congratulations to them for 10 years. And to remind council that they truly appreciate that we were the first municipality to be recognized on the helicopters for the support that we've done. And they're very thankful of that. One other thing I just wanted to mention, I attended a UDI meeting, so Urban Developers Institute. A great discussion, good meeting. And I think pretty much all of council was there. So I really enjoyed that meeting. And I also attended an annual meeting of the Aqua Terrier shareholders, and it also was very informative with good turnout from council. So thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll speak to three events I attended. One was spoken as well by Counselor Redburn, was the seventh CIA graduation. I believe they do eight or 10 sessions, somewhere around there. Could go all the way from reacting, working with our CMP to banking, you name it, to help new individuals that move to the community from elsewhere and get a better knowledge. As well, I brought my daughter Kendra. I believe our growth in the city Grand Prairies because of diversity throughout our country and people wanting to move here, and that's why we're strong. When that stops, we will be going the other way. And just the kudos to Counselor Redburn. I believe he's made pretty well every one of these, I think, pretty well. So hats off to him. The other one is geothermal workshop, the Counselor O'Toole was talking about. There's a few things I'll throw in there. One thing I was surprised about is about 460,000 abandoned wells in the province of Alberta. We look at them as liabilities, of course, that will have to be looked at down the road if they were to be tapped into. They did have an individual. His first name was Kevin, I can't remember his last name, from the States. And they are doing privatized for energy and for heat down there. They're ahead of us quite a bit some countries than we are. But we are an apple within Canada for that many wells abandoned. He believes the individual from the United States, our heat transfer could be huge to the potential here. Not so much producing energy. And by saying that, when they checked us the four different areas, the Motherlodes and Fox Creek, there's a huge, huge deposit there where it could make it feasible for energy. By saying that, heat transfer is something we're looking at. I did bring up in a question about our super pads of 36 wells to 50 wells that we have going on in different areas south of us and throughout the province. That really got his eyes wide open because he was thinking of other things and how that can prevail. A lot of talk about when they do the down in the well, if they do start doing this in Alberta, they might put a certain piping in. So it's all connected in how they could change over. They worry about liability. But one of the biggest benefits, which I know that we do have a farm and community within our borders now, and hopefully be more down the road, is for the heat transfer. You can talk about greenhouses for farming, and pretty well a lot of farms have a well or two on them that could be abandoned. So I think this could be a great possibility for agricultural in the province of Alberta if they can get over liability and bring in a little bit of the gap of technology. So it was a very good conference, and I'm glad we helped in it. Yeah, it was a bunch of professors looking up details from petroleum companies that already had it all mapped up from their drilling. So they pretty well put the data together and analyzed it. So kudos to them, but that's what they did. The other one was the mid-sized mayor caucus meeting. I went for CEOs in Chestermere on behalf of Mayor Given, because there was a few things happening in our city those couple days. Never been to Chestermere. I was kind of lost finding my way, but I did find it. There was a few things brought about MSI, which Mayor Given spoke to tonight with Wayne Drysdale MLA, and as well, you know, longevity. And it was really good to go there and represent the city. Couple things I'd say that I noticed there in Chestermere, their mayor Patricia was really good and organized, and possibly the staffing really helped there as well. Very formal, very nice. A couple things I seen at Chestermere, because it's our newest city in Alberta of 16,000, I noticed that they're buying 100 acres for industrial development. I thought, well, that's unbelievable for 16,000 people. But they're looking at things like that. And then the other thing I'll, before I finish off, they were planning on raising 1.6% to 1.8% property taxes. And at the end of the day, they came out and reduced it by 4.5% or 4.4%. So I thought those were good numbers to look at. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to actually work backwards here. So September 30th, I also attended Orange Shirt Day with Counselors O'Toole, Redburn, and Mayor Given. And in that regards, I would also like to send out my extreme appreciation, not just to our city administration, but to the Japacos Group for helping organize such a very important event about reconciliation. And the speech given by Mr. Fontaine really hit me in the heart in understanding that reconciliation is just more than a word. It's being able to not just forgive other people, but forgive ourselves with any prejudices or judgments that we may have on other people or ourselves. I thought the mayor did an outstanding job. He was a very gracious host up on stage and emceed the event very, very well. He was even running up, tending to the microphone. You would have thought he was a roadie, or at least he did that at some point in his life. So I really enjoyed that event. I'm going to go to September 21st in Edmonton, where I met with the Interagency Council on Housing and Homelessness. There was a presentation by Habitat for Humanity, who also sits around the table with several other agency members. But the announcement was made then, and it's actually being made as we speak right now by the premier. But Habitat for Humanity, to celebrate Canada's 150th birthday, is going to be building 150 houses across Canada in the summer of 2016. There'll be 25 in Winnipeg, 75 in Edmonton, and 50 across the country. Now, they're trying to line up Prime Minister Justin Trudeau to come down and maybe hammer a few boards or put in a few shingles. But for sure, former President Jimmy Carter, at 91 years of age, is going to be coming to Edmonton from July 9th to 16th of 2017 to be building those houses himself. And from what I hear, he actually rolls up the sleeves and goes right to town, right to work at 91 years of age. So if you're in and around Edmonton at that time, by all means, check it out. As we speak right now, Premier Rachel Naughtley is making that announcement about the Canada 150 for Habitat for Humanity. Finally, I had a little bit of time off here not too long ago in the recent passing of my father on September 8th. And I wanted to thank all members of the community and the members of my council team for all the support that she gave me and my family. Sometimes it's the little things that count. And I say all the time in the community that this is the best council team ever. And I've only been on one. So but for me, as a person, just all those little gestures, and I'm going to go around the table, I'm going to thank each and every one of you. But Jackie, thank you so much for welcoming me back to the city with open arms. It made me even more excited to be back and getting into the grind of being a city councillor and a public figure. Counsel McLean, thank you for slapping me around and bringing me back to earth and telling me that I needed to go and that nothing is more important than family. I did that over the phone, and that was very, very important to me. And it actually, it might have affected a vote, but it definitely affected my life. So thank you very much. Like, it wasn't safe for work, the comments and some of the words you're using there, but it was awesome, and I definitely needed to hear them. So thank you very much, my friend. Mayor Given, early in the morning, I came into your office at 8 o'clock. I said, I don't know what I'm going to do. And you said one thing that was very important to me, and you said, there's life, and this is life, council. This is life, the community, this is life. And then there's real life. And that's your family, and that's everything that's important to you. And you know what you got to do. And it was when you said that, those words to me, it actually made me remember. My dad's favorite saying was, do what you do, just do what is right. And I said, I think I got to go. And then you said, maybe you do. And I left your office that day, and I still wasn't sure if I was leaving or not. But thank you very much. Thank you for being there and counsel for me that whole day. Counsel O'Toole, I know, Kevin, we've walked the same path. Seems to be like this is happening all the time on our council. But, you know, you brought such rays of sunshine and joy to me when I was so sad and down. Pictures of the edible landscaping and the first harvest of the apples with the Hillside Community Schools. There's no place I would have rather been but there, and you helped bring me there. And that was really important to me. And also for showing my wife and my son such a great time at the Dino Ball, and then sharing that with me as well. That was really, really important and brought sunshine to my day. Counselor Redburn? Thank you so much for your counsel. Thanks for calling me with the updates on the council meeting that I missed. And thank you for making a motion that I know you didn't want to make, but it was such a testament to your heart and to your care and your friendship to all the members around council that, you know what, even if you don't agree with it, you would do it because you would expect the same in return, and you hope the same in return. So thank you very much for all of that. And Rory, thanks for stepping in and sitting in that chair for me last week while I was driving back as deputy mayor. But most importantly, when I was on my way to Edmonton, knowing that I was going to Winnipeg the next day, you were in the middle of childbirth. Well, your wife was in the middle of childbirth. You were holding her hands or whatever the doctors were telling you to hold. And I kept thinking about you and your baby, little Benjamin. And it, you know, I have this thing in my life that I believe that every time a good soul leaves this planet, it's to make room for a great soul to come in. And I wanted to thank you and your family for that hope, because that kept me going on the highway when I didn't think I could stay awake anymore. So to the greatest council team in the world, thank you very much. I look forward to many more years with all of you around in some capacity.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. And obviously, our sympathies to you and your family in the passing of your father. I think with that, we'll call our council meeting adjourned. Thank you.